Any questions by anybody? It was my ball, the bids were open. Opened in public, everything's only up and up. The highest bidder, and I believe that's the normal way it works. That's not how it works. So it's, the highest bid was $2,550 by Tony Cosetti. So, I'm going for a motion to accept that bid.
Go work.
Bid, yeah, bid being awarded to Tony Cosetti. But what was it?
$2,550.
$2,550.
Who made the motion?
Lori just did.
Lori just did. Lori made the motion.
I think it's the verbiage right now. But that's okay.
But since you got the verbiage right, you got the motion.
Motion by Lori, and second by Ian to accept. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. So Sheriff, you've got the right person. And you can get all that information from the call.
Now we have a call, Ms. Lori, get that, thank you.
So now we're back to, let's go back to past 9:30. So we go to the 9:30 item, that is on page, three, page three. Okay. Page three, item C, 9:30, public hearing, FY 2021 budget. Item one is a public hearing discussion. The White Pine County Board of County Commissioners will take comments from the public on the tentative budgets for FY 2021. For the White Pine County and the towns of Lund, McGill, and Ruth, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oops. And if I could, I'll go ahead and do an intricate section on, and kind of take them one at a time. There we go. And, let's see. Let me get my packet here, because my packet has all my notes in it. So I'll take the easiest one first, that's the town of Lund. And there were only some minor changes to their budget between the tentative and the final, and those include the increase for workers' compensation, and the increase for the insurance policy, which we discussed at an earlier meeting, were going to go up. So that brings the total estimated expenditures to $20,850 more dollars. Those were the only changes made, and I did inform the town council at our tentative budget that those numbers would most likely change, and they're produced to that.
Anybody got any questions on town of Lund's budget?
Motion to approve.
All right, this is the hearing, this is the summary. We're gonna do each one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Item two will be the vote. So we're still on item one, and we are at what town?
The next one should be the town of McGill.
Aye, McGill.
Okay. And their budget is changing again by the workers' compensation amount, and the master insurance amount. So the overall went up as anticipated and discussed with the town council in McGill. The total amount on the budget that would be submitted as the final for FY 2021 will be $150,003.
Any question by three of the commissioners on McGill? Okay. Move on, what's the next town?
The next one is the town of Ruth. And again, for their budget, the things that changed for them were the workers' compensation, and the, the, there was a minor increase to salaries and wages that was overlooked in the tentative budget, resulting in a few, so it was $200 higher in my notes than what I had expressed in the tentative budget, so I made that adjustment for them. And then the master insurance went up. The total amount for the FY 2021 budget for the town of Ruth is $60,320.
Again, any comment by any commissioners on that? That again is the public hearing, okay. Those are the towns of, the discussion on the towns of Lund, McGill, and Ruth. Anybody got any questions before we move on to the next item? I don't hear any, so we are gonna go on to item two, page three, discussion for possible action, the approval of the FY 2020-2021 final budgets for the county and the towns of Lund, McGill, and Ruth, as outlined during the public budget hearing by Elizabeth. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add before we take a vote on the final budgets?
Excuse me, I do need to make the public disclosure for the county budget. Because we've discussed Lund, McGill, and Ruth, but we do need to disclose in public session the changes to your county budget by a more complicated budget than you have on your largest budget. That's a big packet here.
Is that on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah. For White Pine County and the towns.
I didn't see, okay.
Okay, you scared me.
Sorry, it was at the start, I got it, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so, looking, starting with your general fund. Your general fund is going to change in your revenues, the intergovernmental amount will increase by $57,275 for what you just approved for the interlocal agreement with the fire district. So we'll see an increase in revenues there. And the central services allocation, after all was set in place and all the adjustments were made throughout the budget, is going down by $7,956. Those are your only two changes within your revenue side on your general fund. Again, all of your workers' compensation amounts went up, all of your health insurance amounts went down. That was because I budgeted, I think, 5%, and health insurance came in at 3%, and workers' compensation went up a lot more than expected. We see some adjustments in the clerk's office for changes to wages, taking a chief deputy to a deputy, and the associated change in fringe benefits. And then all throughout the budget, you will see decreases in revenues, or I'm sorry, in salaries and wages. This is because I went back and I put a step freeze in place for every single employee except for the sheriff's association. But the union, OE3, has agreed to a step freeze increase. I apply that to all non-union employees that are hourly and all exempt employees. So step freezes are in place, so you see that there are decreases throughout this budget in all departments and in all funds where there are special revenue funds, where there are personnel because of that step freeze. And again, the health insurance should go down for the most part, and so should the, and workers' compensation should go up. All right, and then if we move through in elections, we decrease the half-time election person. So you'll see a decrease there. Information technology, you'll see a decrease there. That is because one of the recommendations is to move that into the road department quarter time. So there is a partial decrease of one position in that, and it's moved into the special revenue fund for the road department. And then you'll see a large increase in county-wide expenditures, that's your master insurance policy and the general fund, for your general fund department. And then, as we go through, most of this has to do with salaries and benefits, as I've already discussed. Until we get to sheriff's patrol, you will note that there is an increase in sheriff's patrol for wages and benefits. That was my omission on the tentative budget. We had one person last year who was on military, or during this current fiscal year, that's on military leave, and, but should be returning to duty here with White Pine County. So that position will be filled in, will be paid, but it was not in the tentative budget. So I had to increase that for that approved position. And then, overall, you'll see a much larger increase in the sheriff's office for all of the workers' compensation, and that is because your heart and lung bill that requires that we cover fire and police at a higher rate went up significantly. And, let's see, I think that those are the major changes that went on throughout the budget, besides decreasing the Main Street contribution. And then when we get to the contract services for national resources, that has been taken down to $60,000 to accommodate RCI and the water attorney. And contingency has been increased by $60,000 in the event we need more than that. In order to cover those expenses, we did, Mike Weeble and I did reach out to Simeon Kirsten with Advocates for Community and Environment, and we believe that we are within the realm with those numbers that we have included in your budget. And then, on the transfers, your transfers changed. I increased the transfer out to the SB 74 fund by the $1 million, as we had discussed, because I cut that short from this fiscal year. And then we, I did talk to Maxine Lance with Victim Witness Services. She is giving $10,000 through her grant to cover her for what we would normally contribute next, during the upcoming fiscal year. She says, please don't forget her in the next budget cycle. And I assured her we wouldn't, because she doesn't know that that will continue. And then we reduced the amount for the transfer out to the egg district for the horses. So that's what's occurred in your general fund. That brings your ending fund balance in your general fund down significantly, but that's not unanticipated. It still will provide you with a 18% ending fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures. One of the things to remember is that if you have a resolution that says if you fall below the 25%, you will come up with a plan on how you will replenish that. So we probably need to start working on that, recognizing that we have a revenue issue in the upcoming fiscal year, but make plans to make sure that we don't lose sight of that.
Are we, are we still in negotiation with Simeon on, you know, if we talked about lowering it, or is there a chance that might even be lower than what we have in the budget?
It's potential.
Okay.
I believe that we are within the range that Simeon said, he gave us a range, because he doesn't know what's actually going to happen. You really can't predict what's gonna go on. But I believe that what we have in the budget is within that range that will cover what he anticipates or has projected.
All right.
He would, we're gonna have him on the agenda in June to come and do a close location session to update the commission on where we stand and talk more in detail about some of that stuff that's pending, and also do an update for the public.
So, what was the ending fund balance number?
So the ending fund balance will be $11,67,957. That includes your $8 million in reserve for net proceeds mitigation. So that means that your unrestricted is going to be $3,67,957. Okay. And then, I will try and get through the special revenue funds fairly quickly, because they are quite lengthy, but I am required to make these disclosures, so I hope you'll bear with me as I bore you to death. So, as we look at egg district 13, they had, their revenues have been reduced because they had a scheduled transfer available from the general fund, which we have deleted for the horse races, but they also increased their budget to cover those out of their own amount of money. So we do have that in their budget, but it will come from their own fund balance as opposed to, as a transfer from the general fund.
Yeah, that is, they voted for 30, is what they.
Yes, and that is what I have in the budget. And then, again, all throughout these, anywhere there's personnel, and there is in the egg district, there is a, gonna be a decrease in health insurance and an increase in workers' compensation, and a decrease in wages for those who are on a pay scale and subject to a step freeze. That's not the case with the, with the fairgrounds post. Okay, for emergency medical services EMS, there was no change to that budget. For egg extension, there was a change to that budget. It basically goes ahead and adjusts for different changes that were requested from the university. They are revenues over expenses, but not by a significant amount, and not by an amount that they can't cover with their fund balance that's available. Basically, they've asked us to help pay for a part-time admin assistant, and then they have moved some money around back and forth between different categories. And I have expressed to them that as long as they hire and retain that person, we'll reimburse them for that based on their, you know, printouts from the payroll system, which is how we normally handle that. But if they want us to hire that position, they will be subject to our payroll policies and what we pay that type of a position, so. And then we have the indigent fund. Again, you see changes there for salaries for the step freezes, workers' compensation, and health insurance, and then the master insurance policy and central services allocations were adjusted. State indigent, there were no changes. The road fund, there were changes again to freeze, do the step freezes, the add-in the quarter time position for IT into the road fund. And then we went ahead and we adjusted some travel training and expense that was overlooked, taking it back to the FY 18 actual, which was supposed to occur. The central services allocation went down and the master insurance went up. No change in your regional transportation, no change in your public transit, no change in your airport capital improvement, no change in your capital improvement in your SB 74 fund, which is how we are coming, the Justice Center project, there is an increase of $1 million on that transfer in, that's coming out of the general fund. The next, but we see changes in are the assessor technology fees. Again, this is something that I told you at your last meeting, that we kind of adjust this as we know what the final numbers are going to be, and this is based on information from Burton, to go ahead and adjust those numbers and keep it at a positive ending fund balance. Your next adjustments are gonna be seen in the wildlife management fund. This is because I received information from the state as to what they will reimburse in what their travel. They basically spend travel, workers' compensation, and contract services. The senior center, there were adjustments to wages and fringe benefits as previously outlined, central services allocation went up. Basically, they have gone from a half-time person to a full-time person as their assistant cook changed, so that's part of the reason, and the master insurance policy went up as anticipated. The next change is going to be in your drug, your drug and alcohol rehabilitation program run by the district courts. And again, we see that we are increasing salaries and wages. We have gone and a decrease in contract services. That decrease is because they've taken someone who was previously under contract, and they're putting them as an administrative assistant. It's kind of a wash back and forth, and it's paid for by a state grant, but we do have to include that because there is that salary involved, and we have to maintain a adequate FTE account. And then the next one that we look at is going to be tri-comey weed. Again, this is a budget that we're going to have to look at a little bit more closely over the upcoming year, we've kind of brought them on board, but we need to get them more in line with county policies and regulations. So I will be working on that over the upcoming year. But for right now, their budget, they are revenues over expenses, no problem there. Most of their money is generated through their weed spraying that they collect there as well, so.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Through the social service, when Desi talked about being able to make the individual full-time, did that happen? I think that's what it was.
Are we talking about the public health?
The public health, yeah, did that transfer over, or?
No, she's still half-time in public health, and then she's half-time in social services. So the position didn't go up, but it's split between the two funds.
And it comes down, or social services funding?
The, the.
Two-fifths, yeah.
Yeah, half of it does, yes, the increase does.
Okay.
Okay. And then building and planning, again, you see the wage and benefit changes as we've discussed previously, an increase in master insurance, a decrease in the central services allocation. So most of these are just when you finalize the budget, numbers move around a little bit. Golf course, the same thing, the changes to benefits and master insurance and central services allocation. And then as we look at the aquatic facility, again, the same thing. We're looking at a decrease to the wages and changes to benefits, decrease to the central services allocation, and an increase in the master insurance policy. Emergency management grant, we've moved around, that's all grant money, and those are automatic augmentations, but they're included in this budget because you have positions in there. Your emergency management and your administrative assistant for the emergency manager are in there, so in order to count those positions, you have to put the budget in. So we'll adjust those budgets automatically as we identify what those actual numbers are at the end of this fiscal year. And then, the decrease in victim witness services grant fund, that is the decrease in the transfer in from the county's general fund, that's the only change in that fund. And then it includes the task force grant, you have increases for your group of insurance and your workers' compensation. And those are, and thank you for your patience, those are the disclosed changes from your tentative to your final budget for White Pine County. Happy to answer any questions, and break the public to you.
Anyone? Anyone on the phone? Nope. Okay. That being said, these were the, this was the discussion, and this is the action item, this is the action item, right? Am I right here? Was that the public hearing?
Yes, that was the public hearing. And just let me first state for the record, the amount of the budget for the 48 different governmental fund types that are covered under White Pine County is $55,63,725.
Okay. That was a public hearing, and that was a discussion item. Does anyone have anything to discuss on that item? Hearing none, saying none? We'll move forward to item two, which is discussion for possible action, the approval of the FY 2020-2021 final budgets for White Pine County and the towns of Lund, McGill, Ruth, as outlined during the pub, during the public budget hearing by Elizabeth Francis. Any questions? If not, I'll move for a motion to approve the final budget.
Mr. Chairman, with the hopes that our revenues will meet or exceed this budget during these tumultuous times, and we will see an unprecedented economic recovery, I would move to approve the budgets for White Pine County, as well as the towns of Lund, McGill, and Ruth, as outlined.
Commissioner, I think the disclosure that your daughter does work in my office, I am her employer, but you're approving my budget altogether as well for everyone else's, so she's not treated any different than anyone else. So either you can abstain just from her salary and her budget, but move to approve everything else?
Yes, and I will be abstaining from action on the district attorney budget. Good enough?
I will second. Does somebody need to make a motion to approve?
Yep.
And I will.
So do I need to back out on the motion?
Yeah, this is just, just because you have some.
Yep.
Okay.
Because you pushed that.
I did.
I did your vote.
Yeah, so I'll push my motion and let somebody else take that. Her step, what's that?
I did freeze her step.
Yeah, she's all frozen, just like everyone else, too.
She's all frozen. I showed her.
Oh, let it go.
Okay, so I move to approve the FY 2020-2021 final budgets for White Pine County, towns of Lund, McGill, Ruth, as outlined during the public budget hearing.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
And one abstention.
And one abstention on the DA's office, that'll work.
Oh, I'm just.
No, just in general.
He's just not voting on that.
Yeah.
Okay, no abstention. Okay, we've got five minutes. You want to take a quick break, or Mike, can you write them? Be done?
Yeah.
Five minutes? Let's do Mike's, then we'll go to page four, item two A, Mike Weeble, district attorney, discussion for possible action to consider and/or take action on the opening of the county park facility to include playground equipment, softball, skate park, ten success, baseball diamonds, and backstop, basketball courts, and other such facilities and equipment, including discussion and action to plan the opening of the McGill pool and the aquatic center consistent with the governor's directive.
Almost like I knew something would be coming out, right?
Yeah, I was impressed.
Hit it on the head.
Well, some people think that I've got an inside lane over there. I don't, I just, I'm learning how to read this governor, so. I'm asking for, probably at this time, especially since this new phase two that's taking place Friday, if you want to go ahead and make the motion to open up all these no restrictions starting today, and then leave the pools, well, discard the pools out, get Kirsty on the phone to talk about it, her plan, and have those effective Friday.
Should I get Kirsty on the phone?
Yeah. She wanted to make some comment anyway, because there's a lot of misinformation out there about the pools and everything, so she wanted an opportunity to clear that up for the public.
Kirsty, you on the phone?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Would you comment on the pools, please?
All right, so with our directives that we got last night, the governor is allowing us to open at a 50% or 50 people amount, and along with the locker rooms being closed, so we will be opening with a maximum of 50 persons at both facilities, with our, even at 50% with capacity, that equals about the same amount under the social distancing guidelines that Dr. Vaynham had put in place for us. The aquatic center will be open Monday through Thursday from 6:30 a.m. to 6 o'clock p.m., and Friday from 6:30 a.m. to 4 p.m., and close Saturday and Sunday. McGill will be open from Thursday through Monday, from 11:30 to 6 p.m., and close Tuesday and Wednesday. With these new directives, at the aquatic, well, the new directives that the governor has given us, I contacted Dr. Vaynham to see if we could possibly move around our original soft opening guidelines that we had set in place that some of you have seen. So some of those will be changed, hopefully, and we'll be able to offer a little bit more than what we intended to in the beginning, of such as fitness classes at the aquatic center. Now, McGill, the biggest thing that we have that people need to understand, and these are all in respect to social distancing, is we have 10-foot sections laid out so that people of groups of four can use. These four people that walk in with you will be the four people that you get to socialize. We are trying to respect social distancing so that we can remain open. We are one of the very few places in the state, if not one of the only in the state, that are even opening an outdoor recreational pool to encourage play, something along the lines of, that is outside of just therapeutic or fitness related. So we want to make sure that we hold as many guidelines as we can. There will not be any form of use of slide or trampoline or any of the play structure areas. We will still set, sell prepackaged foods, but we will not be purchasing anything that can be used of the micro wave. The snack shack will be spaced off for six-week sessions so that people will know your guidelines on approaching the snack shack. It will be, excuse me. A manager will be out there regulating some of the safe ones in the pool area to make sure that people are not violating the social distancing order. If patrons are not following these guidelines, they will be given one warning and then asked to leave. That will not just be the one person, but the person of all parts of the four people that are in that group. Learning for, services will be held every 60 minutes, including chairs and tables. If we are going to allow those, it's kind of being disputed, and I'd like to have your guideline on that, if you would like to put in some input on whether or not we want to provide chairs, because most of our chairs are clogged, so they're gonna be very difficult to clean. Do we want to not provide chairs and just have people bring in their own equipment to sit on? That way, if what they bring in is what they take out, we don't have to worry about sanitizer of their stuff. Do you guys have a opinion?
Bring their own. If we've got clogged, it's so much harder. As a safety issue, I think that they should probably bring their own.
Okay, thank you. Life jackets will be disinfected after each use. The bathrooms, again, will be cleaned every 60 minutes. Pavilion and gathering area will be closed, the food set will be enclosed, and tools and noodles and such, families will be able to bring them in, but we are going to limit, if not even provide, any merchandise that people can pay for, because we want to discourage any form of sharing of toys. Again, this also is, like you guys, I was very impressed with the governor last night that he opened this stuff, and so we didn't prepare any merchandise at this time. We can go ahead and purchase some for later in the summer if we like, once the social distancing is relieved, but at this time, we're just gonna discourage that. Also, if it comes down to it, we may have to set a regulation. Um, also, if it comes down to it, we may have to set a regulation of possibility of time allowed at the pool through reservations, um, along with McGill. Because of these, because there's so many regulations, I would like the commissioners support in reducing the entrance age without an adult from the age of eight to ten, just during this time, um, of social distancing. That way, we can have more of, parents can understand what their children are gonna be doing more at both facilities. If you guys would.